I'd like to call the Lexington County, September 25, 2025 Lexington Board of Supervisors Meeting to order. At this time, we have a pledge of allegiance led by Bill Smith, not Bill Smith Williams.
Which one is it?
A pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, we're going to have the public input session, and you have three minutes to speak. You'll be notified by, if you look up at the chart there, you see a screen rather, you'll see your time limit. So at this particular time, the floor is now open for any public comments. Do we have any? Any online?
No, sir.
All right. Floor now closed for public comments. All right. Public input session. Let's go forward that gap. Let's go to VDOT.
You almost be doing something right.
Have you been to our other meetings?
We call it the calm before the storm.
I got you.
You can't do anything else wrong.
So this month, we had a Y shape right there, past Good Luck, and we've been monitoring it for a while, but we couldn't do it when they were doing that scour project. So we finally got that fixed, and it looks like grass is growing on it. So we've done shoulder repairs on Cedar Lane, ditching on Mosquito Point, Gaskins, and Christchurch. Never fails, so we could have got more done, and the weather didn't cooperate. I guess next year, July and August, we probably need to have them down here so we can get some rain. And potholes candy wide, and we've been trying to do our best to hit brush as much as we can. Finally, the secondary mowing is underway, and they're picking up trash and finally mowing out. It's, I know it's bad, we've been getting a lot of work orders, but hopefully in a week, that'll be taken care of and be a whole lot better. And this past Monday, we judged the ferry landing on the Ottoman side. Been working on that for a while, because that's permitted and also it takes a little bit to get that done, but that is done, so we're probably good for three or four years now. So that's pretty much all I got. Anybody else got anything?
I just got a question. You know, with the shoulder work we're doing from the courthouse down to the dual highway, I noticed at every gate, you stop and then start. I think we probably gonna get some complaints in the past.
You got one right here.
Okay.
Go ahead and...
You want me to go ahead?
Go ahead.
That, whoever said not to do the driveways ought to be strung up. Because it was supposed...
Let me say this, this is the first time I've heard Craig say this publicly.
This has got me riled up, but if you, if that was to make the shoulder safer, I'd like to know how it's making it safer, because you got all these spots with potholes and everything else where every driveway is. They need to fix that, fix that as soon as they can. And I know, I was hoping David was going to be here to hear this, but I know you'll relay it on. But it is, I just, I don't understand that. And I, if, if they want an example, I'll take my combine and put whoever did, said it, and I'll take them down there and let them fly through the windshield on it, because that's what it's going to be. It's a mess. It really is.
And y'all may or may not know this, but I farm also, and I don't know how much trouble it is getting equipment up and down the road. That's the very first thing I noticed Monday morning, and I called, and I've talked to pretty much everybody I can, and this is the way the contract is written, which, you know, we don't have anything to do with the contracts over at Furchburg or whatever. I will say, we have a new district engineer, and he will be down here tomorrow, and I told David to make sure they looked at that. So I'm hoping before they pull out, we can maybe get something resolved, because I personally do not agree with what we've got, and it's certainly not making it any safer. And when they come back to pave, it's gonna, that's gonna be a nightmare also.
The pain in the neck.
But I have talked to everybody I can talk to, and the answer I get is that's what the contract says.
Well, if they want to hear another opinion tomorrow, just call me.
Okay.
Because I'll be happy to like...
Happy to string them up.
Well, we can tell them about change orders, because contracts get changed all the time, so.
And to make it even better, you know, first thing Monday morning, they held school traffic up, which you're not supposed to do, and it's just been a whole lot, and today was the issue with EMS and all. So I'm hoping that's pretty much going to be done tomorrow, and we'll just go from there. But I'm fully aware of it, and they're fully aware of it, and thank you, thank you all for bringing it up, because at least it's on record.
You know, I was coming up, driving up and looking at it, looking at it, and I said, "I'm gonna go up here and say something like this, and I'm gonna be the only one having issues."
I figured I was gonna be the only one having issue with it tonight.
I honestly noticed it first thing Monday morning, and I'm like, what in the world?
You can let them know that the entire board of Lexington County Board of Supervisors has some concerns about that and like to see it corrected.
It's past concern.
I'll be nice.
I don't know what the next level is, but...
I just can't see where it's safer the way it is right now, because the pothole, I mean, I looked at some, waiting in line today, I looked at some of the driveways, and some of those have some awful holes in them, and you're going along on a nice paved park and then hit that, and it's gonna be good.
And, you know, for the traveling public, if you are supposed to stay in the lines, you know, we know that, everybody's what happens, you know. So if it's pavement there, somebody's gonna use it, and if they do run off and hit something, I can see it being a huge concern.
Yeah, a big problem.
Okay. Any other comments, gentlemen? All right. Thank you for allowing us to be in here.
Anytime Craig gets riled up, we know we got problems, right?
I could bring up those signs again if you want.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, indeed. Y'all have a good evening.
All right. Okay. Presentations. Mr. Pittman.
Mr. Chairman, just for the public's knowledge, Mr. Carter emailed me today around 12:30 and said that something came up at the hospital, so he and Bessie Brown, the new administrator, weren't able to come tonight, but they will be at a future meeting.
Yes, sir.
All right, let me start this. I guess you can go ahead. So you can see on this sheet all the trades we have over the site. We had over 130 guys and ladies over at the site today working, so a lot of stuff happening. We're at a point, and you'll see in some of the later slides, where we're dried in for the most part at this point in the main part of the school. So a lot of subs working, a lot of stuff happening around the site. This picture was taken in August, and just to give you an idea about, you know, where we've come over the past 30 days, and this is where we are, is two days ago. Again, you can see how the roofs, for all intents and purposes, is pretty much down on the main part of the building. There's one small part, I think, has been finished up since I took this photo. And yeah, that's the part over what we call Area B, that's over the gym and the aux gym, and they're finishing that up.
It's not gonna leak, is it?
I hope not. I hope not. And I'm getting a lot, you know, if anybody asks you guys about the flat roof, does that school have a flat roof? The answer is definite no. That is not a flat roof on that building. So if you ever get asked that question, we do not have a flat roof on our school. Part of what's happening on the site right now is a lot of stuff happening with the pond. They took advantage of the dry weather, and we're able to get some of the structures put in place. I believe I went over that last month. They're working on the gabion stone walls, which I believe on the next slide, like that's the wall that you'll see on the next few pictures, these walls that they're putting in place to help with the sediment as it goes into the pond, keep that from draining into the center part of the pond. We'll get to the next slide. And this is those guys working on that wall that was indicated on that, and you can see how they're placing the stone. They're digging out about two, three foot of earth, placing these cages in place. That's what the guys are doing in the center of the picture, they're placing the cages down into the pond and then filling it with the gabion stone. And like I said, there's three main drainage areas to the pond, and so these are the three areas that are getting those gabion stone walls. And I believe they show up on the next side, and then the following side shows how the water's flowing down to those areas. This is on the east side of the building, shows you how they pretty much got a lot of that brickwork wrapped up over the past few weeks. It's amazing how much, you know, you get 20 guys laying bricks, it's a lot of bricks going up every day, so things are starting to move fast on the exterior of the building. And just going around different, this is on the south side, it just shows you the progress that they're making. This picture doesn't show out real good, but what you can pick up on this is the loading dock and the trash can that's sort of on the front part of the picture, gives you an idea about where our trash areas will be at the school. This is on Level Two. They had to wait to do the fireproofing on the ceiling area of the school until the roof got put in place. It was the only area they had to wait for that to happen, so now that the roof's on, the guys can come and do the fireproofing. And I believe you'll see in the following slide how the material's there, where they can start on the walls, they're ready to go. And so I would imagine next month, you know, that they'll have all this framed up and Level Two will be in a good spot. This is outside the weight room area. That was all open when you guys came for the tour of the school, and they've got that all framed up and still need to get the roof on that section of the building, but they'll be working on that next. Any questions?
You on schedule?
We obviously, yeah. Things that, the weather hasn't helped, you know, late spring, early summer, we did get a lot of wet weather. But my standard answer, Jessica and I went over this earlier in the week, and my standard answer is that building will be open the middle of August, I can promise you that. So we'll be in good shape with that.
Any additional questions, gentlemen, or comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
County Parks, Mr. Bateman.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, updates on our public parks projects. Start with Westland Beach. Just a reminder to the public that the beach remain and the pier remain closed to the public while construction is ongoing. Wanted to rewind back to 2022 and show you guys where we started at with the erosion here on the site, and then this drone shot, this next drone shot's courtesy of Matt Smith, our chief of EMS, and show you where we've come. It's pretty neat to see. The Phase One's just about complete, Phase Two's underway. There's a drone footage shot of our parking lot and comfort station. This picture was taken just about four or five days ago, and since then, there's been a ton of construction, which you'll see in the next few photos. The concrete work's starting to go down, and so this is the far back right corner of the parking area with the concrete. This is the boardwalk or walkway over to the fishing pier. The platform in front of the fishing pier is complete. Over at the comfort station, they're putting in sidewalks. You can see dozens of workers there, working diligently. Here, they're putting in sidewalk on the back. This shot shows a really important milestone, which is electricity to the building, so it's fully powered now. HVAC is going in, and to your left there, you'll see a bunch of guys working on the ADA accessible ramp to the building. And there was a video, but we'll skip through that. So Phase One, again, 97% complete remaining is fishing, fish cleaning stations. We're working on getting those in and the water line in on the fishing pier. The beach and dune vegetation is likely going to happen in the spring when the conditions are right. Phase Two, 70% complete, remaining underway. And a reminder, construction began May 5th, target completion November 4th. Building interior flooring fixtures trim out, building exterior cupola paint ramps and railings, and then site work asphalt, which they were anticipating to start going in next week, curbing and water line on the pier. Reminder that Taste on the Point will be taking place. We'll be co-hosting Taste on the Point with the Windmill Point Marina on November 22nd. Tickets are sold out. Really excited to work with the Chamber on this, and it's looking to be an exciting event.
And everything, the pier, the comfort station, everything will be open for the public at that time, right?
Target completion November 4th.
I know.
Yeah, so it should be, should be open at that time. Harper's Creek access update. Went out there and took this drone photo of the work there. This was taken about a week ago, so since then, there's been significant work done. But you can see the parking area, the comfort station, or bathhouse, and our fishing pier. Here's the close-up ground shot. This is taken today of our, of our area there, parking area, where the comfort station is. The sidewalk's been put in, beginning to paint the exterior back of the building. The septic tanks have been put in. And there's the drain field area. Another wide angle shot of the parking area. You can't, it's hard to see what it's going to look like at the finish at this point. There's still, they've worked the parking lot all the way up to where the ramp is. They've completed the sidewalks out to the fishing pier from the parking area. So remaining and underway for the comfort station, exterior roof and painting, interior drywall fixtures trim out. Site walk, site work, ADA sidewalks, as you saw, were in asphalt and curbing. Looks like they're scheduling in the next week and a half, two weeks asphalt to come in, and then roadway. Targeted completion is early 2026. For Taylor Creek, we've gone out to bid. We've actually gotten 13 plan sets requested, which our engineers said is a very good response. Pre-bid meeting is next Thursday. Look at, looking at potential award of the project at the November Board of Supervisors meeting, with pre-construction after that, and construction beginning in January, with final completion targeted for September of 2026.
Have the permits been approved? Are they still just in process?
The JPA is in process.
Forgive me, that is in process. Carter Cove Park update. Site design status remains at 80% complete, waiting on some other work to be done. Sanitary sewer is 90% complete. JPA prep and submit is about 75% complete, pending some other work that needs to be done on design. Target project timeline, again, publishing invitation for bids in January. Potential award of the project in March of 2026, with construction between May of 2026 and February of 2027. Chesapeake Trail Park update, still JP and NEPA is in progress, so we're just waiting on that, that to work through. Hills Quarter Tennis Park update. Revised concept plan was distributed for input. Input's been trickling in to Bay Design for that. Again, we're considering six tennis courts and six pickleball courts with parking. Triway Trail update. Some good news, the Triway Trail is, and the county has received its Chesapeake Gateways Award for Phase Two Right-of-Way and Preliminary Engineering, and so that work is going to commence immediately with the procurement of a consultant. Phase One B has been split into two sections, Middle Gate to Compass, and that's the subject of our congressionally designated spending. That is underway in Section Two, which would be from Phase One A to Middle Gate, was the subject of a VDOT TAP application that went in a month or so ago. So our planning and acquisition focus remains on Phase Two, Kimornick to Harris Road, and portion of Phase Two from Compass to Irvington Town Commons, using that Chesapeake Gateways funding. Any questions?
Where people want to talk?
Yeah, so right now, we have a trailhead at Harris Road, which has a few parking spaces. There's another trailhead at Hills Quarter, where the old clubhouse is, and eventually, when we do make the connection to Compass, there's a trailhead already constructed at Compass, but right now, that section of trail goes nowhere.
Any additional questions, comments, gentlemen?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Bateman. Okay, and now we're moving on to public hearing. Ms. Pruitt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first public hearing is for a special exception application from Roy and Linda Martin to, who seek to obtain approval of their special exception application to operate an unhosed and short-term rental at 363 Grand Villa Drive, Weems, Virginia, 22576, which is tax map number 27-89J in District Five. Based on the information provided from the Health Department, the existing septic system can support a three-bedroom home. The applicant has provided all of the other requisite documentation to go along with their application. This is an existing short-term rental, and the property is primarily hosted through VRBO. Therefore, payment of the transient occupancy taxes automatically collected and sent to the county via the hosting platform. The applicant is also aware of their need to manually submit monthly tax returns, as well as submit payments from direct bookings. The issue has been, this issue has been advertised and adjoining property owners notified as required by law. To date, there are no complaints or comments on file regarding this short-term rental special exception application. Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, before opening it up to a public hearing from the floor, do you have any questions from Ms. Pruitt? No? Okay, you're good. All right. At this time, the floor is now open for public comment. Anyone online?
Yes, sir. About the Martin family.
The Martin family. Martin family, you may speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We appreciate you considering our application. I think what I would like to impress on everybody is that we bought this property as a second home. It's not a business as such, and we, we enjoy and want to be good members of the Lancaster County family, and anything you all need from us, or any questions you have for me, I'm glad to answer them. We've never had any problem with anybody staying at our property when we've had it rented. Again, it's a second home and not a business for us, and we appreciate a favorable consideration of our application, considering the status over the last several years when it has been operated sometimes as a short-term rental. Thank you.
Okay. Gentlemen, while we have the applicant online, do you have any questions or comments? Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else online? Thank you, sir. Anyone else online?
Thank you, sir.
No, sir.
All right. At this particular time, the floor is now closed. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the special exception contingent on all compliance, compliance to all requirements in the future.
All right, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right. Number two.
Okay, thank you. Our public, our second, our second public hearing is for a special exception application from Grinnan Barrett LLC, who seeks to obtain approval of its special exception application to operate an unhosed and short-term rental located at 43 Oakleaf Drive in Weems, Virginia, 22576. Tax map number is 33-163B in District Five. The company has been duly registered with the Virginia State Corporation Commission, and the septic operations permit provides for a two-bedroom home. Again, the applicant has provided all of the required documentation for the application. This is an existing short-term rental, and again, the property is primarily hosted through VRBO and Airbnb, and the transient occupancy taxes are collected and paid by those platforms. In addition, the applicant is aware of the need to manually submit monthly tax returns, as well as submit payments from direct bookings. This issue has been advertised and adjoining property owners notified as required by law. To date, there are no complaints or comments on file regarding the short-term rental special exception application. And in this one in particular, I forgot to mention, I knew that they were, the Martins were going to be here via Zoom, but Ms. Barrett, he is here in person if you have any questions for her or for me. Thank you.
Before opening it up to the floor for comments, y'all have any questions for Ms. We're gonna wait for the applicant for later. All right, all right, hold on a minute. We'll come back to you.
Okay.
All right. The floor is now open for public comment. Do we have any public comments from the floor? Any online?
No, sir.
All right, at this particular time, the comment session is closed. Ma'am.
We are similar to the last people who requested theirs. We are actually a business, but we do enjoy our coming here very regularly, about once a month or so. It's a vacation home, and we rent it through Airbnb and Verbo, and we also have a local real estate agent named Amber Walker. She's with Bragging Company, who oversees it for us, so we'd love your consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant, comments? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, before I make the motion, I do want to point out that District Five is a driving force tonight. I move that we approve this special exception contingent on the Airbnb and adhering to all requirements in the future.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right. Consideration docket.
Mr. Chairman, that consensus docket be approved?
All right, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. All right. Consideration docket.
I move that we approve the expenditures for the month of September 2025 as follows. Total invoices, $4,653,409.15. Total payroll, $485,071.34, for a total of $5,138,000. for a total of five million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-nine cents, of which capital improvements were three million, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents.
All right, y'all heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. All right. Mrs. Capanola?
I don't believe that Ms. Capanola is here, Mr. Chairman. You've seen these performance contracts in the past. The Code of Virginia requires each community services board to submit to the governing body of each political subdivision that established that community services board a biennial performance contract for the services that they provide. This has to be done by the community services board before the submission of the contract to the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. We are required by the Code of Virginia to, to make a local match to the Middle Peninsula Northern Neck Behavioral Health, which we do. But this is just one of those things that has to be done every two years, approving this performance contract.
All right, gentlemen, do you have any questions of Mr. Gill before we move on? All right, well, at this particular time, I move that we approve the resolution to adopt the Lexington Board of Supervisors Resolution Concerning Middle Peninsula Northern Neck Behavioral Health, physical year twenty-six, twenty-seven, biennial performance contract. Heard the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, motion passed. Okay, Ms. Pruitt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For your consideration as a resolution to authorize county administration to accept and locally administer nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in Federal Highway Administration congressionally designated spending funds to construct pathways for Phase Two of the Triway Trail. As you remember, last month, we came to you with a similar resolution for the TAP application. This is just following suit with that, with the CDS spending. So for VDOT, the resolution is required. It's called Phase Two for VDOT. I know there's, there's a little bit of semantics going on there, but this is for the Middle Gate to Compass, and that is where these funds are being, being spent.
A point of clarification for the board, VDOT has, in their wisdom, has rephased our, our Phase One B of our project in the two sections. So they're referring to Section One, which this funding is, as Phase Two, and the section that the TAP funds will be applied to is Phase Three. And as you know, to get started with this Phase Two, we need to have this resolution adopted so that we can begin work.
Okay, any questions, gentlemen? All right, thank you. All right, at this particular time, I entertain a motion.
I move that this resolution be approved.
All right, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, resolution is now approved. All right. Mr. Gill, Northern Neck Heritage.
Mr. Chairman, the Northern Neck Planning District Commission has requested that the four counties of the Northern Neck, plus King George, confirm their support and endorsement of the Northern Neck National Heritage Area by adopting the attached resolution. If, if you need to know a little bit about the Northern Neck National Heritage Area, John is very familiar with that, if you have any questions. But this is just a request from the PDC to adopt this resolution.
Is there like some concern, are they going to revoke the designation?
No.
Isn't it officially designated already?
It, it has been designated. This is, I think, just a reaffirmation of it to assist with grant requests in the future.
That's, that's right, and the Northern Neck Planning District Commission and Northern Neck Tourism Commission were designated as a local coordinating entity for the National Heritage Area, and this is just affirming that.
When did we start that?
That, that started in the early two thousands, and, and then was passed as the, in the National Heritage Act of two thousand and twenty-two, in the final, in the final moments of that Congress.
Gentlemen, y'all have any questions?
I move for approval.
All right, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passed. Mr. Gill, holidays.
Mr. Chairman, the last consideration item is proposed additional holiday leave to match the Circuit Court holiday leave schedule. You know from past years that sometimes the Circuit Court orders additional holidays above and beyond the state-approved holiday schedule, which is what the county follows. Last year, the board matched the court holiday schedule. This year, the Circuit Court judge has ordered an additional day and a half of holiday leave above and beyond what the state holiday schedule is. That day and a half is Christmas Eve. Right now, the approved holiday schedule is only a half a day on Christmas Eve. The Circuit Court judge has ordered the complete full day, and also New Year's Eve. So it's, it's nice if the board grants these additional holidays, because if not, we wind up with a situation where the courts are closed, but county administration is open. That's hard for the public to understand. It's hard for the staff who have to work here to understand that. So I'm asking that you match the court holiday schedule and grant this additional day and a half of holiday leave.
Any questions of Mr. Gill? If not, then I move that we approve this request. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, motion passed. Any board reports? County administrator report?
Just, just one thing, we brought up last month about the regional meeting of the four counties of the Northern Neck and King George, that you appointed the chairman and vice chairman and myself to attend that meeting. That'll be next Thursday, and so we'll, we'll attend that and see what the discussion, where it leads, and maybe come up with some, some regional ideas that we can take back to the PDC to implement.
Where was that date, time, give the time again, where was it going to be at?
It's at the Warsaw Technical Center from four to six next Thursday.
Okay. Okay, at this particular time, I entertain a motion for a...
Closed meeting?
Closed meeting.
I move that the Board of Supervisors enter into a closed meeting for personnel per Section two-point-two, thirty-seven-eleven-A-one of the Code of Virginia, to acquisition disposition of real property per Section two-point-two, thirty-seven-eleven-A-three of the Code of Virginia as amended, and number three, legal matters per Section two-point-two, thirty-seven-eleven-A-eight of the Code of Virginia as amended.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passed, we're now in closed session.
That we reconvened the meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Meeting back in, or back in session. All right. Also, I move that the Langston County Board of Supervisors adopt the following certification resolution. Whereas the Langston County Board of Supervisors convened in a closed meeting on September 25th, 2025, pursuit to an affirmative recorded vote on the motion to close the meeting to discuss personnel legal matters and acquisition disposition of real property in accordance with section paragraph 2.2 dash 3711 dot A dot one, 2.2 dash 3711 A paragraph and, no, dot eight, and 2.2 3711 dot A dot three of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas section paragraph 2.2 dash 3712 D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board of Supervisors that such closed meeting was conducted in a conformity with the Virginia law. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Langston County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, number one, on the, on the public business matters, lawfully exempted from open, uh, meetings requirements. My, my, my focus moves on the gentleman. Yeah, that's age, I guess. From open meetings requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting to which this certification applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in a motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies. Before a vote is taken on this resolution, is there any member who believes that there was a departure from the requirements on number one and number two above? If so, identify yourself and state the substance of the matter and why in your judgment it was a departure. Having heard no statements, I call to question Mr. Bellows.
I certify.
Mr. Lee.
I certify.
Mr. Geezy.
I certify.
Mr. Smith.
I certify.
And I certify Palin. All right, this certification resolution is adopted.
Move for adjournment.
All right, motion to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passed.